Good evening, everyone. It's the regular meeting of the City Council on Monday, April 9, 2018. For those of you wishing to address the City Council on any item on the agenda or under public appearances or oral communications, please complete a speaker card located at the entrance to the council chambers and submit it to a staff member as early in the meeting as possible. May we all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May we have roll call, please.
Kristensen.
Here.
Mr. Gingona.
President.
Mr. Sylvester.
Present.
Ms. Manalo.
Present. Thank you very much. Moving on to our presentations, we have a proclamation. It was for March 2018 as American Red Cross Month, and we have a representative for the American Cross Government Relations, Mr. John Woodall.
So, it's a proclamation for American Red Cross Month 2018, whereas the American Red Cross saw a record-breaking year in 2017 of challenging domestic and international response efforts. Through the support of its volunteers, in just 45 days, the Red Cross responded to six of the largest and most complex disasters of 2017, including back-to-back hurricanes, the deadliest peak of wildfires in our California history, and the horrific mass shooting in Las Vegas. In addition, the Red Cross responded to nearly 50,000 home fires in 2017, providing peaceful assistance to help 76,000 families recover. And whereas March is American Red Cross Month, a special time to recognize and thank the Red Cross volunteers and owners who give their time and resources to help the community, the Red Cross depends on these local heroes to deliver open help during the disaster. We applaud our heroes here at Daly City who give up themselves to assist their neighbors when they need a helping hand. Whereas across the country, around the world, the American Red Cross responds to disasters big and small. It collects about 40 percent of the nation's blood supply, provides 24-hour support to military members, veterans, and their families, and teaches millions life-saving skills such as lifeguarding CPR. And through its Restoring Family Links program, connects family members separated by crisis, conflict, or migration. Whereas we dedicate the month of March to all of those who support the American Red Cross's mission to prevent and alleviate human suffering in the face of emergencies, our community depends on the American Red Cross, which relies on donations of time, money, and blood to fulfill its humanitarian mission. Now therefore, I, Justice Seaman Hall, of the Air Pacific Daly City, on behalf of the City Council, hereby proclaim March 2018 American Red Cross Month. We have a representative here, Mr. John Woodall.
Thank you.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, absolutely.
Thank you. One, two, three. One, two. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mayor and Council. I just want to remind everybody that the Red Cross continues to work in community. If people want to get involved with installing smoke detectors, which is one of the programs that we're doing, they can go to Facebook and Twitter or redcross.org to find out about how to get involved in that. Also, Red Cross is always looking for blood donations that save lives, and you can download an app with the Red Cross for donating blood, or you can go to redcross.org/give-blood. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
John? I just would like to make mention to everyone and to you as well, sir. I know the extensive travel you do back and forth, all the way down from Menlo Park to attend meetings up here in the Bay Area. And to let everyone know, Mr. Woodall had asked me last year to become part of the organization, and I guess with my heavy schedule, I was unable to do so. But all, I want to say thank you for your constant diligence in continuing to provide for our communities in those times of need. And the invitation in itself is something that I won't forget. So I congratulate you and the Red Cross and everything that you've done for the tragic year that we had in 2017, and I hope that 2018 thus far will be a much better year. Thank you so much, Mr. Woodall.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Now we have our proclamation for April 22, 2018, Earth Day, and we have two members of our community that will be receiving the proclamation. We have a very robust community here that likes to give back and ensure that our environment and our, just, our Daly City is well-kept, and that we're planting more trees and plants. And so we have our member from Tothia here, and we also have a representative Clyde from Tothia, but we have our special volunteer who is tirelessly out there every day making sure the rain gardens are kept, up-kept, and that's Terry Marie Counts. She's our community volunteer, and tirelessly every day she makes sure those rain gardens are clean and well-kept. So, thank you very much. Also, we have Dell, I don't want to say your name wrong, Shambari, and he's with the San Bruno Mountain Watch. And so if you've ever been to the San Bruno Mountain, it is such also a beautiful sight and a hidden gem in Daly City. And he makes sure that, you know, the environment over there, that we continue to safeguard it and keep it safe. And also one of our community members, longstanding community members, who really care about our environment. And so it was very fitting to have two people come up and receive the proclamation because we have such active community members here in Daly City. So, thank you very much.
I don't know, I see another active member from, from the Tothia group. Clyde, why don't you come down and be with Terry? You guys are kind of a team anyway. We just want the community to see you.
Okay, so this is for the proclamation for Earth Day, April 22, 2018. Whereas on April 22, 1970, Americans came together to celebrate the very first Earth Day to confront environmental issues and rally around a single message: The success of future generations depends on how we act today. And whereas a healthy and sustainable environment is the foundation of a vigorous society and a robust economy, and the city of Daly City strives to collaborate with residents and business to create that environment in our community. And whereas the city began offering curbside pickup for food scraps and food soils, paper products in 2016, and continued to reduce landfill-bound waste, cut greenhouse gas emissions, and produce nutrient-dense compost. And whereas the city continues to implement the second year of Project Green Space, a volunteer-driven initiative to plant trees and rain gardens to better adapt our urban forests and green spaces to a changing climate, to better shield Daly City residents from the effects of climate change and air pollution, to process and purify water runoff, and to make Daly City neighborhoods more livable. And whereas the city has partnered with Republic Services, the San Francisco Conservation Works, Shredded, and other government programs to provide the annual Free Earth Day 2018 recycling event, that's also a pitch-up right there. On Saturday, April 21, at City Hall, featuring deep-waste recycling, document shredding, used tire take-back, free compost giveaway, and information on municipal clean energy, composting and recycling, energy efficiency rebates and more. Now therefore, I, Justice Seaman Hall, of the Air Pacific Daly City, and also City Council, do hereby proclaim April 22, 2018 as Earth Day. So, congratulations.
One, two, three. Thank you. Like the same here.
Well, I got into this, this is kind of by accident, when I decided I was not going to work any longer. One of the things I wanted to do with volunteering, I have a second cause that I support, the H&R Museum, but I wanted something a little bit closer to home. And that was about the time that I began hearing things on Nextdoor Neighbor, people complaining about trash and other things, and nobody was doing anything about it but complain. Thankfully Clyde stepped in and said, "Pit-a-pitchin'." And, and he did. But the sad thing about learning to volunteer is in fact, if you get into it, to give back to the community, the more you volunteer, the bigger the deficit grows, because you see what needs to be done, and you want to do more, and the next thing you know, you're back at work. But thank you all for this lovely proclamation. I accept it on behalf of all the members of our organization.
Thank you so much.
And thank you, and the mayor members of the council. I'm excited that you even are talking about climate change, so I'm grateful for that. But thank you for recognizing the work that the mountain watch does. It's extremely important to us to get this recognition because it will help us get, you know, grants to be able to get kids up on the dunes, which is our current project, Daly City Dunes Above Hillside Park, which is a world-class area, nature area, believe it or not, and it's right here in Daly City.
It's amazing.
And we look forward to continuing our partnership with Daly City and bringing kids up there, as I said, and bringing them up there for a no-cellphone experience, get them off that. And we also are working on Daly City Nature Park, Dunes Nature Park, which you know about. And we see it as a tourist attraction, and I see it as a tourist attraction for Daly City. And when we do that, we can celebrate our homegrown native species, including the endangered lusinja, which some of you have seen up there, it's a full yellow flower, federally listed endangered species, and other rare native plants, because they've all been wiped out by development pretty much around. And about this time of year is a good time to go because of tight-flying butterfly, butterfly about three inches wide, very beautiful, flying up there about now. Plus geologically, it's a sand dune, which I won't go into, but it's a rare area, about 150,000 years old, ancient area. And I just want to let you know and remind you, everyone, that we have worked with schools such as Jefferson High School, JFK Elementary, Phil Dale School, and others, I think Paul Siede too. And I'm going to use this chance to promote, I'm giving the hikes on the dune on April 14, that's this Saturday, 10:00 AM, Taglia Center we're leaving from, leaving from, 10:00 AM, 285 APOD. And we hope to have a restoration project going while you're hiking, so you can see how that works. And it just so happens we're having a native plant sale, and I gave a bunch of people in the audience some $5 off a native plant sale, seeds we collect from the mountain, grow in our greenhouse, sell to the public, condo association, et cetera. So, thank you again for this recognition, and we look forward to future partnership with Daly City. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'd also like to say thank you to Stephen Stolt, who has also been such a great staff member who leads our sustainability here in Daly City, and he does an amazing job. So, thank you.
Madam Mayor, I just want to make a few comments. Mr. Clyde Stormont, it was a pleasure to meet you last year, and I remember going out and helping to clean up, and if there's anything worse than picking up someone else's garbage, you know, I just can't understand people. But the fact that you continue to work out there and continue to keep doing it, and Terry, I appreciate that as well. I don't know if some of you have saw the People Behaving Badly video that was posted, where they trashed the rain garden, buses run over the flower beds, and I don't know, you know, to reduce greenhouse gases for the future and for our future generations, our kids, is very, very important. I appreciate it. Thank you for what you continue to do. Mr. Shambari, I get your emails all the time, don't think I'm ignoring you, I see them, and I appreciate everything that you do. Mr. Salty, as the mayor had made mention, you're very important. And Republic Services, Mr. Mahoney, there's, I don't know, being part of San Francisco and working in San Francisco, I mean, I live here in Daly City, I've never had a firm such as yours that have done so much for the city, because I see there's much more coming, and I will make mention of something else later, that really had set me off, and you guys really rose to the occasion, so I thank you and your staff. What I want to say, it's a community effort, and it's a collaboration amongst everybody, that if we all can work together, Daly City would be a better place for all of us. Thank you all for everything that you do, and also to the community. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any more comments from colleagues?
I will say that Dell has just offered basically to take you all for a hike on the mountain, and I took advantage of that a couple of years ago, and it was really something to see. If you haven't experienced it, Dell is the perfect person to take you up there, he'll show you around, it's safe, it's beautiful, it's picturesque, and it's really a nice day to see the city and some of the beautiful areas that we have in Daly City. So, I would encourage you, if you haven't yet seen the magnificence of that location, I would contact Dell and meet him at the, at the Taglia Center.
Thank you so much, Vice Mayor. Like I said, we have a wonderful community here in Daly City, and you see a lot of our community members here that give back. So, thank you for Tothia, Clyde, and Terry, and for, and actually on the next Earth Day, on that very day, they're actually also doing another cleanup. So, if you want to help clean Top of the Hill Mission, and help Terry out and Clyde on Earth Day, they're going to be doing that from 9:00 to 12:00 PM, right, at Top of the Hill. And then also, thank you so much for helping take care of a natural resource that we have in our own backyard, Dell. So, thank you so much for that. And now we're going to be moving on to a continuation, I think, of the great work in our community, which we have our representative Monica DeVincenzi from Republic Services, who is a great partner in, in our community and great business that does continual support around ensuring also our environment is, is doing its part for our community. So, it's America Recycles Day poster contest, and we see wonderful young faces in the audience today, and it's such a delight, and so we'll have her come up, please.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council. Thank you so much. It is a great night to be here, and we're so thrilled with all the work that everybody has been doing, especially in this month that we like to call Earth Month, but for us, Earth Day is every day. But what I'm here for is that Republic Services in partnership with the city of Daly City, we held our first America Recycles Day poster contest towards the end of last year, calling on all kindergarten through fifth-grade class students to participate in our poster contest. America Recycles Day, if you're not aware, is a nationally recognized day that's held every year on November, excuse me, on November 15 to promote and celebrate recycling in the United States. So, we just thought it would be a great way to kick off kind of the message about how important recycling is for our community. Our 2017 contest theme was Keep Our City Clean, Recycle, and we were thrilled to receive 74 submissions for our first poster. And believe me, selecting just a few out of the 74 we received was a very hard task, but we were thrilled to have our recycling coordinators and Stephen with the city participate in narrowing it down. And all the participants received a Republic Services recycle card, and were entered into a drawing for a $50 gift card. The winning artwork will be displayed and used in various social media and outreach materials, our newsletters, and brochures, so you'll be seeing them more often. But we do have the winners here with us tonight, and I'd like to show you the artwork as well for them.
Yeah.
So, the first one, and I'm not sure if she was able to make it, but our random drawing winner was Janelle, who's a second grade from Thomas Edison Elementary. But this was her poster.
Stop thinking.
So, we'll make sure this gets to her. Our third place winner, and Madam Mayor, if I can have you join me, put me in, please, I'm Mike, I'm your general manager. Our third place winner is Hazel Smith, a kindergartner from Daniel Webster Elementary School, and she will receive a $25 gift card. And this is.
Ooh, beautiful forest.
That's a Lorax, very cool. And what does the Lorax do?
He's the one that, that, that's pulling the trees, the Lorax, and he's the one that goes out of the sloper trees, so.
Dr. Seuss.
And the Lorax helps save the trees, right? Very cool. Well, thank you so much. Congratulations. Our second place winner is Eric Acevedo, second grader from JFK Elementary School.
Yay!
Ooh, a lot of things happening on that one.
Can you show it to the audience?
Turn around a little bit.
There you go. Turn around, and then we're going to use your face. And then we're going to lift your arm. And Eric gets a $50 gift certificate.
All right.
And our first place is Jayden Lu, a fourth grader from Tobias Elementary School. Sorry, the most important part.
Ooh, it's lovely.
And Jayden gets that $100 gift card.
All right.
Thank you again.
Thank you.
That was great to see all your artwork, and having you already think about our environment at such a young age, I know we have our future ahead of us, and so thank you for the artistic work and making sure we understand, to make sure we love our environment for the future Thank you very much, Republic Services, again, for, for that wonderful contest for our youth. Now we're moving on to our LPGA MediHill Championship Golf Tournament. For those of you who don't know, it's going to be on April 23rd to 29th. We have Laura Winkelman from Octagon, and then we also have a general manager from Lake Marstod Golf Club here, Mr. Pat LaRocca.
Hi, thank you guys for having me. I'm not sure I know if I've met all of you, but we play well soon. My name's Lauren Winkelman. I work with Octagon, which is the agency helping the LPGA put on the golf tournament in a couple weeks at Lake Marstod. I'd like to thank Daly City and Council for all of your help so far and in the future. We greatly appreciate all that you've done, and it wouldn't be possible without your partnership and all of the work that you guys have put into this to help us. I'd also like to thank Pat and Lake Marstod Golf Club, and we're taking it in hand with them to put this event on, and they've offered this huge generosity and support in this. So, in two weeks, we're very excited to welcome 144 of the LPGA's best players here to Daly City. And they'll be competing for a one-and-a-half million dollar purse over a four-day tournament. It's Thursday, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, with cuts after play on Friday. The pro-am and the tournament are open to the public at either a $15 price or $25 for all five days. The tournament will be covered on the Golf Channel, Thursday through Sunday, covered on Thursday and Friday, 3:30 to 6:30, and Saturday and Sunday will be 3:00 to 6:00 PM. Our title sponsor for this event is MediHill. MediHill is based in Seoul, Korea, and is a leading face mask brand for a professional cosmetic company, LMP Cosmetics. MediHill is using this event to launch their product in the US market, and we're really excited about LMP Cosmetics and MediHill's commitment to working with the LPGA to grow the tour and the international golf industry. We currently hold our contract with MediHill for three years, and we're excited about the expansion and growth that we can hopefully bring with this tournament over those three years and beyond that as well. We're hoping for this to be a long-term event with the LPGA and the city. And based on our one-year success so far, we're confident that this event will only get larger and hopefully be more meant to the community and more outreach within Daly City and the area. If any of you attended swinging skirts a couple years ago that was at Lake Marstod, there'll be some changes from that event. I won't go through all of them, but the biggest one will be that we'll be switching around the holes of the tournament, so that the current ninth hole will actually be the 18th hole for MediHill championship. A little plug, we're still looking for volunteers to help at the tournament, and that information is all online, and I do have some flyers, if anyone would like to take one home. And I just wanted to thank Pat and the city for inviting me tonight. We're excited to be working with you guys and hope that we could be here with Rio. We're excited to be working with you guys and hope that we could be here with Rio as my team along as we run business and people...
Great, yeah.
So thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Are there any comments or questions?
I have a question. When people are going to the tournament, where...has it been mapped out? I'm sure it has, but just to let the audience know, where are they going to be parking?
Um, so parking will be at...this is the topic of discussion here.
So if I might interject at this point, Vice Mayor and Mayor, actually, we have a real concern about parking. And in fact, just earlier this evening, the police chief and I were alerted to the fact that the traffic plan that we had prepared several weeks ago for this tournament, which was consistent with the traffic plan that we had in place for the prior Swinging Skirts events, has been changed. And we have a great deal of concern. And item number one on the consent agenda actually is your approval of what we thought was an approved traffic and transportation plan that would have encompassed the entrance of Lake Merced on Uniparis Sarah Boulevard. Just an hour or so ago, we found out that that's been changed, and they're planning to use the back entrance on Park Plaza Drive as the main public entrance and the transportation hub, which we have a very real concern about for a couple of reasons, because that's not in Daly City, that's in Broadmoor. And so we cannot be providing services at that location because it's not in our jurisdiction. And we are further concerned that the Broadmoor Police Department will not have adequate staffing to be able to address traffic control and pedestrian issues in that area. If you're not familiar, which I'm sure you are, Park Plaza, Garden Village Elementary School is on the east side of the street, and on the west side of the street is Fernando Rivera. There's a lot of dropping children off in the morning with lots of traffic congestion, picking them up in the afternoon. And beyond that, the entrance on both sides to that location is a San Francisco Public Utilities easement. So we have a number of concerns, and even though we have this item on the agenda, because we didn't know until, I said, about an hour ninety minutes ago, if you approve this agreement, it is not necessarily going to be in place. And if we have to change it, the next time that we conceivably would be able to do so would be after the tournament already started. So we have some concerns about that. We certainly, I told Mr. LaRocca and I told Lauren just moments before the meeting, that we certainly support the event. We have, for the three years that Swinging Skirts was here, since we heard about this event early this year, the chief and our public works department, our traffic engineer, our library and recreation director, where we thought some parking was going to be at Westlake Park, it is not apparently envisioned now. They're planning to use parking at Westlake Shopping Center, which I guess is why they wanted to have the entrance on the rear side of the golf course. But we're very concerned. The chief and I especially are very concerned about what that's going to mean for our ability to control what will most likely be a very serious traffic problem out there for this event. And we certainly don't want to not help the event to be a successful one. But changing the plan that was approved and that we put before you tonight, and just finding out about it a little while ago, is not helpful to the effort for us to be able to provide support for the event. So I wanted to raise that concern for you, and I don't know, Lauren said she was going to talk with her supervisor or the higher-ups in Octagon, the organization, the event management company, and I don't know if you have, so I don't know if you can respond to those concerns.
I'd like to offer my deepest apologies on the change. Sorry about that.
You need to speak up. Yeah, if you're a little closer to the microphone.
I think it's...
I think she was going to respond. Did you want to say something?
I just wanted to offer my apologies on the change. I'm not working on operations, and I'm...I can answer the broad questions. I am able to offer a phone call or a conference call with people who are worried in charge of this to talk through it further. I apologize on this notice on this.
Look, I just want this to work. I mean, I think you have an awesome tournament. I'd like to have this be a long relationship. I'd like this to put Daly City on the map of sort of the LPGA. And so there's a lot of brilliant people that work here in Daly City and with your company, and so I'm hopeful that you will work it out. I understand things change, but if there's anything I can do to help, I really would like to resolve this and get it going. So, thank you.
Yes, you would. Well...
I know.
Councilmember Richardson.
I know this is not your department, but if you could relay this message, have your people looked at the parking lot?
Yes.
At Westlake?
Yes.
It's full a lot of the time. I mean, there's like, maybe if you squeezed it out and were really aggressive at parking, maybe forty spots in the entire area?
We've contacted them, and we're going to pay them to use three levels of their garage. So we're going to use three to five.
The garage, which you enter on the far side of the parking lot? I mean, of the shopping center, that's quite okay?
It would be the side that's behind Home Depot.
Mm-hmm. And that's it?
Correct, yes.
And how many...do we know how many spots that has?
We're not involved in it, so I don't know.
Yeah, I have no idea.
I'm not sure the exact number of spots.
Because that's a public place, and oddly, if you've ever been there on a Saturday and a Sunday, I mean, they've got a Trader Joe's there and a Safeway and a Home Depot, and it's spring. I mean, it's chaotic.
Yeah. We've contacted a couple levels, and we're also going to push a lot of public transportation and provide a shuttle for a lot of people.
Okay. As someone who uses that area frequently, I'm skeptical. Public transportation is not tremendously good there. You can get close with BART, but how many of your people are going to walk that far? Don't really know. But they definitely need to look over the system and really make sure that you've got a spot for everybody, because the last thing we want is a lot of angry people upset and not being able to participate, and then, you know, the LPGA is going to go someplace else. So we want this to work. Great, well, make sure that they really have thought this through, that this is where they want to park. Great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Go ahead, councilmembers.
I'd like to thank staff for providing preliminary report. Oh, ma'am?
Oh, sorry.
I was first talking about the staff, and then I'd like to address you folks as well. I had the opportunity to sit down and speak with the individuals involved, LaRocca. And this is something we've been waiting for. So I would like to advise staff that, well, we try to adapt to change, but whenever we have a plan, a plan already in effect, it's difficult to change. So please take this in consideration as well. I think there's a parking lot on Juniper Sarah also, which is closer, and it's just down the block near the movie theater, and I'm sure that folks can park there as well. As for Broadmoor, Broadmoor is, well, the term I've heard, the donut hole of Daly City. But there's something that I call mutual aid. If they don't have the staffing to provide for traffic, whereas Daly City was going to provide the staffing for traffic, let's try to work together with both agencies. How do we get to yes? Let's make this thing happen, and I hope that staff, and of course with you folks as well, that, you know, we want it. And we've come this far, so let's just work together, and we can make this happen. I mean, how many...is it going to be for a whole week or three days or what?
Yeah, the majority is Wednesday through Sunday.
Wednesday through Sunday, okay. Well, our citizens are probably going to get a little bit upset with traffic, but it's something that doesn't happen every day. So just as long as we advise them and proper notification and working with all the police departments around, whether it's San Francisco, whether it's Broadmoor, or whether it's Daly City, or calling in mutual aid to assist, let's make this thing happen. So that's all I have to say at this time. We want this, and we've been waiting a long time. It's LaRocca. I caused you to get up.
Do you have any idea why the change?
I do not, but I'll find out for you.
Because, well, from someone who lives here, it doesn't make a lick of sense. It's like, we got all this parking over here, that's the way that everyone in the area is used to entering, and then all of a sudden, you're flipping it to the other side where there's no place to park, close, close, and...
Let me find out after the management company tomorrow, but I would like to, as Councilman Sylvester said, let's all work together.
Yeah.
Exactly. Octagon is our new management company, and they want to move into the community.
Yeah.
This is their first year, they've put together their team, and their team is going to move in and be part of Daly City.
Yeah.
I live in Daly City, and I plan on being here for a while, and I'm very proud to be in Daly City. The one thing that we have to do is make sure that we can make this happen properly. I think we have to have all of the city manager and your team come to an agreement, as Councilman Sylvester said, and Vice Mayor, Mayor, Council. It's going to be something good for our city, and we want to put our best foot forward. We're coming to council, and we're here to counsel that our best foot may not be forward. So we have...
Or maybe you need two best feet.
I agree. That's what I'm talking to you right now. I think it's a makeable putt.
I like that.
And I think with us all working together, we can make this happen.
Great, thank you.
We can get a call with you tomorrow as soon as possible, and let's follow those rules.
Thank you.
Great, thank you so very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. So, yes, we have hope that working together will find a resolve. So moving on to the approval of the minutes for the regular minutes of March 26, 2018.
You have to approve?
Actually, I have, sorry, I have one addition, yeah. So on the minutes, one moment. I have one change for the minutes on page five. For the immigration workshop held by Dr. Marc Santa Maria, it was mentioned it was televised and recorded, and it's not in the notes. So that's just the change. Let me just give that to you.
With that notification, I move to approve the minutes.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. Moving on to the approval of the agenda, please.
Move to approve the agenda.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
On to the consent agenda.
I'd like to pull item three.
Okay, pulling item three. Approve proposed reclassification of senior accounting technician to accountant. Anything else being pulled off of the consent agenda?
I'd like to pull item number six.
Item number six, which is authorizing use of donated funds and federal asset forfeiture funds for a Daly City gun buyback event. Thank you. Any more items pulled off the consent agenda, please?
With the exception of three and six, then I move to approve the remaining consent agenda item.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. So item number three, approving proposed reclassification of senior accounting technician to accountant.
Right. And I pulled this because there were members of our community who wanted a greater explanation of what was going on, and I want to thank you for being able to provide that this evening.
Absolutely. Happy to give the background. So the city is proposing to add a classification of accountant to the finance department. The account classification is an at-will position. The incumbent in a current civil service position of senior accounting technician will be reclassified or promoted to this new add-on of account, should it be approved by council. This action does not require the approval of the personnel board. However, it does require approval from the city council, and prior to council approval, which we're seeking tonight, the city is obligated to advise the affected employees and their respective union...
Can you speak just a little bit louder?
Which in this case, the city is obligated to advise the affected employees and their respective union, which in this case is the Teamsters. So the finance director met with the incumbent and the incumbent's Teamsters Union representative, wherein the director obtained the support for this proposal. And in my role as human resources director, I also notified the Teamsters business agent, Ms. Shipley, to provide her the background and to ask her about any concerns that the employee may have about this proposal. Ms. Shipley, who's the Teamsters business agent, said at this time, "We don't have any concerns, but we did agree that we would check in with each other after three months to determine was the classification making sense, or was the work really making sense? Did employees have concerns?" And we would be willing to address them. So that's sort of the HR process side of it. I'm not sure if you want to know anymore about the operations.
I just wasn't sure that I heard at the beginning. So the person who's in the senior account, who is the senior accounting technician, will just move into that new job?
Correct. The people will maintain this as one.
So no one's losing a job here or anything?
Yes.
And it's a promotion, it's moving up?
Correct. And it was important for the union to make sure that other employees were not gaining more workload because of this.
Yes.
And so that was clearly discussed with the business agent, and if anything pops up in the future, we do want to look at it as the finance director.
Thank you. I think that answers all of the...
Good.
Well, I forwarded all the questions, yeah.
How'd you know? I was so prepared.
But I didn't submit any questions, and I do have a few.
Okay, no problem. Morris?
I heard the word "promotion." So promotion, to me, triggers additional pay. Would there be additional pay in this classification?
Yes.
That's correct. In the staff report, it will show the fiscal impact, and it will show the difference here.
I just wanted to be sure. And secondly, since this is a...oh, okay. I heard you make mention that this is an at-will position. So subsequently, there is no testing for this to allow others to apply for this position? It's based upon an appointment?
So this is an interesting case where the senior accounting technician applied for an accountant position and was very competitive, but another person from the outside got the account position. Our director of finance felt that, one, operationally it made sense to have another accountant, but also that this person was qualified for the accountant. So she has already tested for it, but because it's at-will, it's...there's not a list or anything like that? If that makes sense?
Yeah, it kind of makes sense to me, but, you know, I just want to ensure fairness across the board for, you know, what qualifications does it take to apply for this position? Do you have to be an employee with a previous background? Can someone come in from the outside and they go through an interview process? I mean, I think that can apply to any at-will person who comes in and applies.
Right.
I just want to ensure that we have provided complete transparency for the people instead of, say, just taking from within. That's the concern that I have.
And those are really good questions, and I think based on the fact that we did a recruitment and the incumbent was a competitor and absolutely is qualified for this position, I think we can still go about that. Yeah.
Okay, thank you, that's all I have.
Thank you.
Any more questions? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
So moving on to item number six, authorizing use of donated funds and federal asset forfeiture funds for a Daly City gun buyback event.
Okay.
Do we have a staff member present? Okay, chief? Chief?
Good evening, Council.
Good evening, Chief. Um, I'm relating back to the previous gun buyback to which we obtained close, uh, well, we approved, if I'm not mistaken, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, the amount of $30,000 from asset forfeiture. And I'm wondering, why did that number go down to 20,000? That's my first question. And the second question is, according to the staff report, not to exceed 29,500. If this event turns out to be a very good event, and if somebody wants to turn in a weapon, but we've, uh, met our 29,500, is there any, uh, mechanism in place, uh, to take care of those folks who want to turn in a weapon?
To your first question, Councilmember, I have to double check. My recollection was $20,000 in asset forfeiture, and the rest of the money was from Congress for the sphere in the town.
Correct.
So, I think the total we had at the last gun buyback was 29,500. Uh, as for this time, there is a possibility that that could happen where we have greater demand for, uh, reimbursement than, or for those funds, but based off the last one that we had, where we only...
Right.
Ended up giving out $5,500, it feels like...
Yeah.
Uh, the amount of money we have this time is plenty.
I thought Councilmember, uh, Supervisor Canniff also gave, didn't he?
Well, Supervisor Canniff committed to it, but we never ended up having to use this money.
Oh, okay.
And we don't feel like we have to use it.
I see, I got it. Thank you.
And if this one is like wildly successful, then we'll put more money into it the next time around.
Nothing to prevent us from having...
Yeah.
I think you kind of answered, um, another question I had, Chief, and that was, uh, that was outreach to other representatives, uh, Assembly, uh, and I had made mention that we should hit up our Assembly folks and all our elected, uh, officials. I have to, uh, thank the town of Coma, and, um, you know, so we can not always depend on asset forfeiture, but, uh, hopefully, we will learn from this experience as we've learned from the other one, and, uh, thank you so much.
Sure. I will add, uh, Councilmember, I think asset forfeiture, I think this is a great use of asset forfeiture.
Yes, sir.
To get your gun back to the streets. So, probably no benefits.
Oh, yeah.
Can we use this opportunity to announce again clearly when, where, and what time?
Yes.
Sure. The next gun buy, uh, gun buyback event is on Saturday, May 12th, here at City Hall.
And the hours are?
I believe, if I have a supplier funding, I believe it starts at...
Okay.
And, and just to clarify, is, is it gonna be the same procedure where you have to be in your vehicle and you will retrieve it, you can't just walk up with a gun and that kind of thing?
Correct. Okay, we prefer the firearms are unloaded in the trunk of a car, the driver pulls up, and then we will...
Pops the trunk.
We with the driver, and we will go to the trunk and retrieve the firearm.
Thank you. So, for, uh, public and the audience, and also those watching, it's Saturday, May 12th, at City Hall, from 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. $100 for handguns, shotguns, and rifles, and $200 for California-defined assault rifle. And it's 100% anonymity, so anonymous.
No questions?
Uh, thank you for that, uh, Madam Mayor and Vice Mayor, cause I, I just wanted to reiterate how good this program is. Don't ask, don't tell. Just bring those guns in...
Get the guns off the street.
And, you know, because having an assault weapon or, uh, is, just the mere possession of it is a felony. But here, you are able to drive up, it's in your possession, in the trunk of your car, we will take it. And then also, I, I believe there's a new law for also, uh, clips, which I think is a misdemeanor, anything over eight rounds or something like that. But we're mostly concerned about the guns, so it's good. So, for the public out there, if you have them, or you know somebody who has them, and you don't have to live in Daly City. That's why I'm saying this thing might just be so big, uh, you know, we'll take them. We just want to get these weapons off the street. That's all I have. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Move to approve items three and six.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. So, we're now moving on to, um, item number 12.
12.
Exclusive negotiating agreement, uh, the E&amp;A between the City of Daly City and Equity Residential for property at 6401 Mission Street, Daly City, site number three. We have staff member Tatum Mothershead.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the City Council. Um, as you probably recall, back in March of last year, the city released a request for qualifications to the development community for the development of 6401 Mission Street that was formerly owned by the Redevelopment Agency. The City Council had a variety of interviews and public comment period for, for the community to get to know the development teams that were looking to develop here. Um, on August 21, the City Council had directed all of the developers to move forward through the request for proposal stage, which allowed the developers to present more detailed proposals and information about their, uh, project. Equity Residential submitted a proposal for a mixed-use project that was proposing somewhere between 95 and 115 residential units, uh, ground floor, commercial, and an extension of the subterranean parking lot, um, adjacent to Equity's project directly to the south. On December 11th, the City Council did select Equity Residential as the preferred developer for this site. So, since that time, staff has been working with the developer to, um, come up with an exclusive negotiating agreement. The draft document was attached to your staff report, and it outlines, um, a series of particular tasks that the developer will complete during the agreement period. The E&amp;A further establishes a six-month term to complete the negotiations, project design, and preparation of a disposition and development agreement, with the option to extend for an additional six months, should there be additional time needed. The developer will also provide a $20,000 deposit to help offset any costs the city incurs for legal or consultant fees. Um, staff is recommending that the city approve the, um, attached draft E&amp;A and to authorize the city manager or her designee to execute said agreement. Um, I can answer any questions, should you have them. We also have Drew Sullins, who's representing the development team here as well, who can maybe answer questions, uh, about the development proposal.
Any questions from my colleagues at this moment? Councilmember Sylvester?
Uh, yes. Um, I heard anywhere from 95 to 115 units.
Correct.
Uh, would this be subject to, uh, are these rentals or, um, condos to purchase?
The proposal at this point is to do a rental project. Um, the, the zoning for this site actually doesn't allow for residential, so kind of in lockstep with the DDA, they will also be going through a zone change...
Yeah.
And, uh, basically, a zoning entitlement. So, the, the council will be reviewing both of those at the same time. But as we've discussed, um, previously with the developer, the proposal is a rental project.
All right, thank you so much. And as we move forward, um, do we need to specify in this agreement, or that's to come later, about our, uh, housing ordinance for the 20%?
It doesn't apply to this.
How many will it be identified, or does that come later on?
Currently, the, um, inclusionary housing ordinance requires the payment of a fee. The developer has indicated that that's what they're choosing to do. Um, as the Affordable Housing Committee is aware, the city is looking at modifying our ordinances to look at, um, requiring units and rental projects. Either way, this is a DDA, and so the, the city can choose to negotiate, um, something other than the payment of a fee, and that would be something that the developer and the City Council would have to negotiate. But that's something that can be done in this period, and it could be outside of the normal zoning entitlement process.
So, my question is, if we can't come to an agreement on, um...
Can then we move on?
...a number of units versus the impact fee, then this agreement becomes null and void, if we can't come to an agreement?
The, and the city attorney can correct me, but I believe the E&amp;A wouldn't necessarily become null and void, it's just we would come to an impasse on the disposition and development agreement.
Cause, cause this is just saying, "We're gonna take some time aside, and we're only gonna negotiate with you." It's an exclusive right to negotiate. It's no kind of deal, other than the fact that we agree that we're talking to you and nobody else.
I got you.
It's sort of like going steady, you know? We're making a commitment here, but it's not forever.
Yeah.
And if things don't work out, well, we're moving on.
Now I got it. Now I got it. Okay.
Yes.
So, um, I appreciate your question, Councilmember Sylvester, um, in regards to, um, the affordable housing, uh, piece that we're working on, especially with kind of the state, um, requiring, that we're able to require onsite, right? Um, onsite rentals. And so, my question is, um, as we move forward, um, we haven't put that ordinance through a resolution through the council yet, and how, I mean, how does that, um, lie with this particular development? If we pass it in, in the next month or so, like, where would this development lie?
In this case, you do not need that ordinance to negotiate that. As the property owner, essentially, we can negotiate any deal points we want. Now, obviously, we want to negotiate with the developer, and we want to see a successful project built, so that's all part of the negotiation process. But as a property owner, w- we have a little more leverage than we would with a private developer developing private property.
Cause it's on our redevelopment line?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
I have no further, thank you, Madam Mayor.
No questions? Are there any? I see no, uh, public comment, so, um, is there a motion to...
Uh, Madam Mayor?
Yes?
Uh, you did say the developer is here?
Uh, yes, he is. Mr. Drew Sullins is available.
Hi, Andrew.
Thank you so much, sir.
Representative.
Representative?
Good evening.
Okay. Uh, I just wanted to make a comment. Um, we appreciate the time that was taken to have gotten to this point, but also, uh, one of our main priorities here in Daly City is housing and affordable housing, so you just put that on the back burner, and...
We understand.
All right, that's all I want to make mention of. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, so much for being here, and also, I just wanted to mention, um, I think, uh, the property that you have is on top of the hill, and as mentioned prior, that hopefully, when you do, are you planning to have ground floor retail?
That, I mean, that's all, I'm sorry, that's all part of the discussion that we're gonna be having.
Okay, all right.
You know, we get into the DDA and get into the actual project.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Move to adopt the resolution?
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Actually, can we have a roll call, please?
Ms. Christensen?
Um, I didn't vote for this project in the first place, so, um, I'm going to vote no, cause I don't want to, uh, lead people on, that I'm supporting it, when in fact I'm not. So, my vote is no.
Mr. Boyne Ventura?
Aye.
Ms. Sylvester?
Aye.
Ms. Manalow?
Aye.
Okay, uh, moving on to item 13, exclusive negotiating agreement, E&amp;A between the City of Daly City and Majestic Hospitality AF Content, Inc. for property at 1837 Juniper Cerro Boulevard, Daly City, California, site number one. Um, and we have, um, our staff, Tatum Mothershead.
Um, actually, I want to make one correction. I found an error in my report. This was actually site two, when we did the RFP, RFQ process, so it's not site one. I apologize for that mistake. Um, but this report will probably sound a lot like the previous report. This went through a very similar process. Um, the, the city released the, um, request for qualifications back in last March. Um, we received multiple proposals and had, uh, the council interview process, and we had the public comment period, so we got to meet, uh, the development teams. By August 21, we had, uh, the sole developer, um, and they were directed to go ahead and advance to the RFP stage. Um, they submitted a proposal to include a 200-room boutique hotel with amenities that included a heated pool, uh, food and beverage space, rooftop bar, wellness studio, and retail shops. And on December 11th, the City Council selected this developer as the preferred developer for the site. Um, so, since that time, staff has been working with this development team as well to develop an exclusive negotiating agreement. The terms are similar to Equity Residential's in terms of the, the, um, performance period, the deposit, so, um, it's very similar to that, but the agreement is attached for your review. Um, this project is probably a little bit more simple because the, uh, zoning for this site, um, allows for a hotel, so there's not gonna be any zoning amendments that would be required, based on what we've seen from the proposal so far. Uh, so, it may move a little quicker, but, you know, we'll, we'll see. Um, staff is recommending that the City Council approve the draft exclusive negotiating rights agreement and authorize the city manager or her designee to execute the agreement. Christopher Henry, who is representing the development team, is also available this evening, and so, if you have any questions from staff or from the development team, we are available.
Thank you very much for that staff report. Um, I do see we have, um, some public comment here, and so, open up to public comment, um, at this time. So, we have Tavi Soho.
My name is Tom Soho. I live in Daly City, and, uh, I also work at the club, Bonn Stralling, and, uh, I would ask that the State Council should postpone discussing the item of the hotel, end up here at all tonight, or if that's not possible.
Can you speak up a little bit?
Yes.
Yeah, great, thanks.
Uh, yeah, so, we ask that you postpone discussing the item of the hotel or to vote no on it, uh, to give the, uh, developer a chance to, uh...
Do what?
See if, to do a card check.
No union?
Uh, as someone that's worked, uh, lived here in Daly City for about 30, about 30 years, for about 15, um, working the union has really helped my family out, where I have a home in our state here in the city. I believe, uh, that having, uh, that having a, you know...
Yeah, we already talked about this.
With help of residents, with well-paying job, secure job, full welfare, and keep people in the city, and, uh, so, it's, uh, so, yeah, so that's, that's pretty much all I'd say. Thank you.
Thank you for your time. We have Cynthia Gomez.
Sorry.
Yeah, we already talked about a card check, didn't we? Yeah, when they first came, yeah.
Is this the right one? I don't remember. It was a microphone.
Try the...
You have to speak loud.
Yes, speak louder, yeah.
So, good evening, Council. My name is Cynthia Gomez. I've come here before to speak to you about this project, and what we're asking for tonight is what you're going to tell me, and so, what we're asking is that you not approve the agreement this time and not allow the developer to sit home, because there is a crucial thing, they have not yet signed the agreement that is called card check, you travel with your partner, that will provide a fair process for the workers to join, to do so.
Of course.
And so, what we're asking is that you postpone here on the item, to give them a chance to do the right, they haven't yet, but it's the negotiation process, and we want to give them a chance to do so. You're gonna hear from speakers who talk about how it's not good, how you're gonna hear people tell you what it means to attempt to bring women out that, that is the darling place, and you're gonna hear people tell you how it's changed their life, how, you know, that the workers of Daly City deserve what workers in every other place deserve, who's having the difference sign, for San Diego, Emoryville, Berkeley, Oldfield, San Francisco, Monterey, all these workers have not agreed, and we want to bring them here. So, it's what we're asking for tonight, when you're asking for, oh, tell me, if it's not possible to postpone, then we're asking for you to vote no on this particular structure, and give yourselves the option of what you want to get, and the part that gives the kind of project that the workers of Daly City can do.
This is Tom. You do realize... You do realize that this is not an approval of the project at all? It is just saying, we're going to work together to negotiate, and that's one of the things that we will be working on negotiating. We spoke about that when the project first came forward. So, this is no deal tonight, of any kind. We're not approving of anything, other than we're agreeing to sit down across the table and to start negotiating.
No, I certainly agree with that's the way of the deal.
Okay.
Just like going steady.
Is that this is the point where the city should be asking the developer to speak about what kind of commitments there are coming in? And that it sends the wrong message.
And that would be happening in this negotiation?
It actually can't be negotiated, because unless the land is released, the city is not a developer. So, he's just disposing it somewhere, and so, what we're asking is that the union and the developer talk, and that will come, it's the developer's job in this case, to bring to you all kinds of commitments that are enforceable, and this is a particular one that they can either bring to you, or not bring to you. They haven't yet brought it to you. And so, I think I understand your concern, Councilperson, which is about the process, but what we're asking for is that the developer and the union, these are the two parties that have to be on the table here, given the way the law is touching, and we need our time to be able to give them a chance to bring a deal that's not enforceable, it's for them to follow the process. So, that's what we're asking for.
And so, in the last four months, you haven't talked to them?
Uh, no, I've actually spoken to Christine, and so, we have, hasn't yet. There's no such commitment. I want to, even though there's word, I mentioned, but those are, those have been reached other cities, and I want to ask the same thing with each year. It hasn't happened, and this is a fairly major decision point, and so, what we're asking is that the city postpone hearing it, because doesn't, that decision hasn't been reached, even hasn't been reached, we ask.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for that.
Is our timer set at all?
She was responding to your question.
Yeah, no, I mean, in the original. Yeah, great.
So, all right, let's have Ms. Edith Casta Vena, please.
I just wanted to, well, I'm just, I put it out, I've lived in Daly City, often on the verge, in years of the Point Pacific project, and I've been an employee at Olympic Club for less than four years. And I'm also of the same opinion, that it's very important that we get a card check neutrality agreement with this group, because having good jobs in Daly City is very important for keeping our residents being able to afford the housing there. And as an employee and a union, what is the goal for, I have pension, I have healthcare, I have all the things that are really necessary to be able to stay in there. I was widowed about four years ago, and if it weren't for those things, I wouldn't have been able to stay. So, I just want to make sure that Daly City is very hopeful, where it moves forward, and for this project, we're just a hotel, because, you know, families depend on having, you know, health benefits, having anti-benefits, having prescription benefits, and, you know, a pension to live on, so that when we do retire, you know, we'll have the ability to stay in this area. Actually, I live very nearby, I'm right on the border, in the program, so until we're able to get that card check neutrality, I would like to ask you, either postpone and, you know, continue discussion, or vote no. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
How many people know of this?
We have Rosa Shields.
You just speak louder, I think.
Just speak louder, yeah.
Yeah, to the, that one.
Yeah.
So, this issue is important to me as well. I understand that it might be a little complicated with negotiation issues, but it's important to start this discussion now, because I've done many times this issue, as a student, working in a non-union workplace, and then working in a union workplace, I experienced a different experience. I experienced, like, sexual harassment, wage theft, and a variety of other hostile working conditions in a non-union workplace, and I experienced a vast difference in a union workplace, so that, that quick example. And then, as a student organizer, working to unionize externally in a non-union workplace, I experienced how difficult and complicated and arduous that can be, from a worker perspective, from an organizer perspective, and it's much easier when this model is instituted early on, as in, in the development stages. If this model had been instituted before, there were many shops, many businesses that were already unionized, it would have been easier, more ethical, better all-around for workers, for organizers, for the employers, as there was already a model set up. And then now, working as a researcher, or working as someone who's involved in new development, from the labor and union side, I understand how complicated the process can be, and how much easier it can be when a card check neutrality agreement is already instituted in the model pre-development, and in the development process. So, when the card neutrality is instituted, it allows for a union to be established, and it puts that in the agreement, so it's much easier, it establishes better working conditions, better jobs, it establishes a good precedent. Daly City would have a great precedent for union workplaces, and it would allow other shops to build union density, which is better for residents, which is better for workers, which is better for all of Daly City. And then, it's important to me, just as a local, I was in Francisco, and was involved on the road, so.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Maybe we have Hope Williams.
Hi, good evening. I'm in school. I'm a full-time student at San Francisco State University. I'm an activist, as well as a student organizer, so I fight a lot of battles, and is what I'm happy to fight for. Let me see where you can run this, it's a bit simple. We're asking the city council, Daly City, to postpone discussing the item for this hotel project, and not to hear it tonight at all, give the developer a chance to do the right thing. If that is not possible, then we're asking for the council to please vote no, and don't approve the E&amp;A with the hotel developer. And finally, this developer has said they work with union hotels in other places, they should do the same thing here. This is your land, this is your city, so, and the public resources shouldn't get sold to companies that aren't promising good jobs. This land could be used for other things. Please either postpone this item, or vote no, and don't approve the project without a guarantee of good jobs.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Maybe we have Mr. Jose Soto, please.
Good evening, Council. My name is Jose Soto, and I'm resident of Daly City as well. I'm also a union rep. I work with Nike, Lululemon, Twister, and Ford, and C and D, and also the, uh, kitchen and, and the building. I am here because it is a major concern to me, having a developer, you know, have freedom of, you know, build a hotel without having a contract process. I think it's crucial for residents of this Daly City to have the process, a fair process, a card check, and choose whether, when the hotel is being built, and they start working, to have a choice whether they would like to have it or not. What we're asking here is to postpone the, uh, the show tonight, and have, you know, the developers the opportunity to change their mind and do the right thing. Having a union job really helps families. I came from, thought over twenty-eight years ago, speaking zero English, having no education in life, actually, now I'm here, and now I actually fight for workers' rights, and that's why I'm here, insist on that in the union, ask it to tell them to get up to the right thing. Being a union developer has genuine life, and I work as a dishwasher, I work in a residential residence, I work for nonprofits, and now, in ten years, working for a union, representing employees, and I think I'm probably, and the work is actually also appreciated, having, when they can enjoy benefits, retirement plans, medical insurance, and in all respects, we work. If you cannot do it without a fair process, if the process will not be postponed, we'll vote no tonight. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Can we have Tho Do, please?
Hi, good evening. Thank you for taking the time to listen to our voice and messages. My name is Tho Do, and I've been working for, as an organizer for United Local Two for seventeen years. Prior to that, I was in a company, working as a... I think you hear enough about the difference in terms of having a union, which translates to having one job, be able to have time to participate in the school, your children's school, be able to participate in your community, so that's very important. The last seventeen years, I've been working with a worker who doesn't have a union, but wants to be able to organize, and I could be able to tell you what I witnessed in terms of the years that it would take to be able to achieve the organizing right without a card check neutrality agreement. It ranging between four years to eight years and longer. Currently, and the reasons that people are being without, uh, a way to force their employer to recognize your right, it doesn't happen, and it could escalate into a labor dispute. Currently, in San Antonio, we have the voting game, workers of the Marriott Water Fund opened up their campaign, asking their employer to have a fair process. The company refused, and that's going to escalate to more and more. The worker at the Redwood City, they've opened a campaign for a year, asking their employer to have the same agreement, so that they will be able to choose to have a union or not, to a fair and mutual process. I don't think you want that in your city. So, I think the decision on you today, somebody earlier, Councilman, Councilperson, Councilwoman Christensen, said that the leverage is now, the leverage is now, even though you enter a negotiation with the developer, you want to set a tone, you want to set the pace to say that, look, this is important for the city, that workers should have the right to simply to have a union, to do that process. So, don't lose that process, don't lose that leverage now. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Can we have Rich Diaz, please?
I'm here to come for, I'm just rich, yes, I can live in Daly City for two years. Basically, I want to give you my, my input of my life. I love Daly City, I respect my, my surroundings, and I just want to let you know that having a new development, and if we, we don't have no, no way of knowing that they're going to do the right things, and I think that's why we stand here, to let you know that we have to know from the beginning, how this project is going to work. It's going to work for the, for the company purpose, or for the people.
Or both.
And I, Council, it has to be done for the people, because we in the city, we work together as a family. And I've been with the Local Two for twenty-three years, and I feel very proud that the Local Two is stepping up to protect the people.
Thank you very much. So, I don't see any more cards on this item, at this, is there any more? Oh. You can fill one out after. Okay. Wait, just fill one out after, please, and make sure you hand it to the clerk.
Hi, my name is Lily Beth Monafloshio, and I actually don't live in Daly City. I live in the neighborhood, uh, next door, which is in San Bruno. I wanted to tell you that, you know, without having the union, you know, I've been working for, you know, fourteen years, and my dad actually retired from the Fairmont for thirty years, and without him being part of the union, having the pension and the benefits, he wouldn't be able to pay for his, his mortgage. So, I think it's very important that, that workers are allowed to, to organize and have a union before the hotel's built. And I'm just afraid that if there is no card check, that if they try to organize, then we'll be able to, and there'll be retaliation. So, what I'm asking is the city council, if they can hear and wait, and if that's not possible, and just say no to this project. Because I was part of the San Bruno Economic Committee in San Bruno, where they had organized, they were going to build a hotel in, in San Bruno, and we, the residents, had asked the city council, give, same, same process, if we can ask developers to, to, um, to, to work, I mean, to refer people for a person. So, that, that project is actually on board right now, so it didn't, the project hasn't been built. So, what I'm asking is that the city council could just, you know, say no, that, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there someone else?
I think he's...
Okay, you have, Tho, you have to fill out a card, when you're done.
Okay.
They have to, for the record.
Good evening, Council. My name is Kyle Batista. I'm a senior at St. Arch of Eagle, and I don't live in Daly City, but I volunteered for, uh, the campus campaign. We are asking the city council, Daly City, to postpone discussing the item for this hotel project, and not secure it tonight at all, to give the developer a chance.
It doesn't make any sense.
Basically, while she, she mentioned she's part of the union, and she's been a member for this all, and she's the council representative, and they're working with her, and, uh, the union gives her opportunity to, I'll leave, like, here for my school and stuff like that. According to USF, you know, without the help of the union, I don't think my mom would be able, you know, to put me in a school. I don't like, giving me all the opportunity, you know, I, I really appreciate what they are doing. So, basically, what I am with is, this developer, Jessica Telus, has been working with the union, tells us about the process. They should do the same thing here. This is city land, and public resources shouldn't get sold to companies that, you know, with obviously good jobs. It's like a user, so please postpone that.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Christensen?
Um, I want to start off with saying, I have probably been a union member longer than anyone in this room, fifty-four years. Started when I was seventeen. I was a shop steward for ten years, grew up in a union household, so I totally understand what it means to be in a union. I think what you're asking tonight to vote no does not make any sense. We need union jobs here, the sooner the better. Now, I'm not going to be very supportive of a project that does not have card check neutrality, and I'm saying that to the developer, to his face. So, we need to get on with the process, but we have, when we, when this project first came up, that was one of the first questions that my colleagues brought up. We brought up project labor agreements in the building of the hotel, we brought up card check neutrality, and we said we wanted to have union employees in that hotel. But you can't get that done until we start the negotiations. So, I don't think you have anything to worry about, in terms of at least this vote. If it didn't come to pass, I'm not going to be very supportive. So, and we've said that, right at the very beginning, on the very first night they made the presentation, I think I almost said it word for word. So, thank you for coming and sharing, and giving the public an opportunity to see how important unions have been in your life, and maybe some people who've had no experience with that, then are getting a little bit of understanding about what that does for people. So, I give it up to my colleagues to express themselves.
Any comments? Councilmember Sylvester, please.
Actually, I was hoping that the developer would come on up and, and make a comment, but it's not necessary. It's okay. But you can come on up, and you can hear me speak anyway. I have to concur with Councilmember Christensen. Well, first of all, I'd like to say, thank you so much for what you've been through so far. I think we had three folks who came, and you folks basically rose to the top and stuck in there, so I have to give you your kudos for that. You've heard from our... You've heard from our, our, some of our constituents and some from outside, basically, union workers. As Madam Christensen alluded to, she has been a union member. I have been a union member, and I definitely believe in the concept of having the right to organize. That's what it's asking. We also discussed the PLAs before. So I am just hoping that that's on the table. Now, for the folks out there who are union members, as Madam, I have to concur with Madam Christensen, she said it, you're asking us to say no, which really doesn't really make sense. Because in order for us to get to building this place, we have to start somewhere, and this is what we're going to be voting on. We have to start somewhere. And I'm basically putting it out to the developer that the union issue is going to be one of the top priorities. And, because we don't want no picket lines while you're doing the building and going through. We want our community to, to be employed. Of course, you get folks from all over the place, you can't control that. But to have the right to come together as a union, I think that's very, very important. As for the union folks, you're asking us to say no. Can you count how many hotels we have in Daly City? Thank you. You got less number of hotels than you could probably count on one hand.
Oh, yeah.
This is definitely needed. This project is needed for our city. And again, I have to give kudos to this developer who has stepped up and said, you know, amidst all this that's going on, we want to build. So I need you folks to keep that in mind as well. Daly City needs more hotels. Okay? We need more hotels. So please keep that in mind.
We need a union hotel.
Okay. And of course, we would want it to be union. So thank you. That's basically my comment. But we have to start somewhere in order to get to the next point. And this is the somewhere where we have to start. Okay? Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
So, I mean, I, I think if you hadn't already discovered it, this is a union town. And there are a lot of union supporters on this council. And, and I, you've been through this with us before, and we have told you some of our concerns and some of our preferences with respect to what happens and, and the involvement of the unions. We want this hotel to happen. We appreciate very much the, that you are the successful applicant. We think it's going to be a tremendous help, help to Daly City. It's going to be an awesome project and an awesome hotel. But there is plenty of wealth to share in this construction of this building. And so we are hoping that you take a, a more, we are hoping that you will be able to reach a negotiated settlement with the unions. Now, I'm not gonna, obviously, we can't get involved in your negotiations, but I am curious about what your, what can you tell us about your feelings at this point, on how you, how you, your interaction with the unions has been? What is your, I guess, I'd like to hear some goodwill on your part, that you're progressing to maybe hopefully reach an agreement somehow. So I'd, I'd like to hear from you.
Sure. Is this working?
Yeah, well, I can hear, well.
Well, I can hear you, but it ain't working.
Yeah, it's probably not working all that well.
Just talk loud.
Yeah, because the regular microphone's not working very well tonight.
Yeah. No.
I mean, I've got fresh batteries in.
The ones on the, the microphones on the Diaz are working. It's just that, for some reason, the technician is not able to get any sound. So use, use the handheld, that's the one you need to use.
Great, thank you.
First off, to sort of backtrack a little bit, you know, as far as our opinion goes as where we're at, is that there's not much to negotiate yet as politicians. Instead, we have it entered into a community state. From a philosophy perspective, we absolutely hear where the union's coming from. We're just, in our opinion, not at that point of having that discussion. We even know there's actually projects in any form going forward, and right now, it's just, it is a question mark. With regards to the unions themselves, we're open to the conversation. Once we know there's a project of some sort going forward, otherwise, we're any negotiating against ourselves and be running chaste tails, and we don't know that what we're really after yet. So for us, we're more than happy to engage with Local Two. We're more than happy to have conversations, but we even know that there is a project that we're, that we're working on. I'll be honest with you, on both the construction and on the operation side, which are two different worlds. We are in the San Francisco Bay area, and the amount of brain damage I would probably cause myself to try and run away from them would cause me more brain damage than working with them. So we're actually open to the conversation. It's just a matter of timing. Once we know that we're in a exclusive negotiating period, we know what all your requests and demands are, we're happy to have any conversation. But until that point, there's nothing much to talk about.
Yeah, because there is no project.
There is no project.
At this point. Yeah.
And I think the other big thing, I think you guys all recognize this, is that we are heading into a bear market right now. The stock market is going down, building cooling was going to cool off soon, being hot. So to have another construction project that's active and going on, I know there's already a few others that you're considering. To be honest, I'm, and I'm shooting myself in the foot, I'm surprised construction unions aren't here, shouting about construction.
They will be.
I'm sure they will, but I thought they would be here as the markets change. So again, we're open on all sides, but we know that there's a project that we're discussing. Right now, it's just, it's, they were.
Thank you for your comment. I think, if anything, one of the differentiating factors that we saw when we saw kind of the proposals was that how you've worked with unions in the past. And so that, that identified you as a, you know, it stuck out. And, and when reading the proposals, being able to work with union, unions, or having some of your properties become union hotels, definitely struck a chord. And so, you know, as mentioned, we're happy that you're here and that there's a project further down the line, but also it's just understanding that there, that's one of the key things, as mentioned by my colleagues, the very initial stages around the importance of having this opportunity for having the right to organize, right? So it, it's not something that came out of the woodworks, it's something that initially has been said. And so I think even at this point, you know, residents and people in the audience that took their time out want to mention how important it is to them and their families and to have other people also have that same opportunity. And I hear what you're saying, you're saying that it's, you know, we're not there yet, but I think, I hope you understand how strongly, I think you've heard it from my colleagues as well, how important it is to have the opportunity and to have that, the right for people to organize within and have that as part of it. So at this point, you're saying that you're not necessarily, can't see down that line, but you said you're willing to work with Local Two. I mean, I, I need more clarity on that, when you're saying, I, I can't even see that down the line.
There are two different things here. One is there's a property company, the other there's a property company. The requests with regards to a union that Local Two is representing is an operating. So when we go into our EMA and we're discussing the operations of the hotel down the line, that will be with our management company, who's a major department. But just at hospitality, they have a partnership development company, so we look at the property. At a certain point, we'll, we're going to eventually sell the property. And Local Two's agreement is going to be operating, and we'll say we're running the hotel. That's pretty much the nature of the hotel business. So we'll have it in negotiations of what terms are required in the operating agreement. But as far as, as far as we're talking about development right now, again, I would be more, my first part would be talking with construction unions.
Absolutely.
Then, once you have the operating agreement in place with the management company on board, then we'll be talking about unions regarding management issues.
And none of this is approving the project. So when we get to the point where it starts listing all the commitments that the city and that everybody, and that the development company and everyone has with each other, that original plan, we'll go to the planning commission, then, then it'll go to a precise plan. And they still don't have the right to build anything yet, and we have a number of opportunities to, to say, I'm sorry, you spent all that money developing this project, and you're going to have to go someplace else. Or we can say, wow, we really worked this out, and this is great. We want the hotel, you want a hotel, they want union jobs, we've done a great thing. So we'll have that opportunity.
Absolutely. Again, my focus right now, challenges, is moderating construction, but it's a business deal.
Right.
Tariffs on steel and on aluminum and on other construction, it's cost of building is going to go up.
Yeah. And the faster, the faster this can go, the greater opportunity, the greater chance we have that it will actually be built.
Vice Mayor?
I had a question about the speed in which this development is taking. I, we, I, from what I remember, you said that we've sent our request for proposal in March, that's more than a year ago.
Yeah, we need to move fast.
Do you, maybe, Tatum or you, can you give me a timeline as to when you think we're going to see some significant movement in developing this?
I'll defer to Tatum. I mean, we're willing to move as fast as the city's willing to move as far as negotiating and taking something into the planning department.
Part of the, the agreement milestone shows a projected timeline. So essentially, during this period of time, the quicker we can get term sheets in for the development, the DDA, the quicker the project will move forward. Because essentially, once you have a disposition and development agreement, you'll have the conditions of that disposition, it'll be all outlined in that agreement, and then the project can move forward. So we had initially, you know, once, assuming we get an EMA approved, then we have good faith amongst the parties to start putting some money down so that they can put some effort into building the project, and they can probably project what that timeline will be. So we built that into the agreement to have a milestones of what we're looking at. Initially, we looked at this as, hopefully, we can get negotiated terms in place within initially the six-month period, if not sooner, so we can get it to the city council and go through the process of developing the, the DDA.
So within the DDA, wait, do you have a question?
No, no.
So with the DDA at that point, is there an opportunity for such as requests we've asked, can it be housed there?
Yes. So the development agreement is really the conditions of how you're going to sell the property. Because the city owns the property, we can develop those conditions. So if you're going to be looking at housing or affordability, for instance, those would be negotiated terms in a term sheet that we would go back and forth with a developer, the city council and a developer to dispose of.
And that happens in every project.
That's in every project, yes. And these are terms that, you know, once the developer is comfortable that we are only negotiating, they're spending money as well as time and resources, just like the city, to hopefully dispose of the property.
Well, for example, I think in the case that the committee members have spoken here and they have a request, for example, their, their request around having, you know, the right to organize or whatnot, specifically in that, for example, in that situation, can that be housed in the DDA?
So that's a tricky question. Essentially, we can discuss what those terms would look like, in that we would like to see that, but we would have to discuss with the city council about, it's, the contract is between the union and the hotel, it's not with the city. So we would like to see those as a sort of a general condition, if that's the desire of the council, we can discuss what those terms would look like. But the actual enforceability of their agreement is not a city function. But we can definitely talk about labor type agreements, and that would be a discussion that we would have with the council.
And we've seen, we've had that before.
We've had general agreements like that in our prior, prior redevelopment projects, yes.
Project labor agreements.
We've had project labor agreements, yes.
Yeah. All the way.
And to be honest, it's nothing we're not expecting to have a conversation about and talk through.
Yeah, we've made it perfectly clear.
Yeah, we're just waiting till we know that there's actually something to develop, actually.
Okay, you ready for a motion?
Well, I think, you know, hearing from everyone in the audience and you, I think that at, at this point, I'm going to go with my colleagues, but I think it's really important, especially in these circumstances, around, you know, having the conversations, the necessary next steps. I mean, we have the parties here. I hope that in this situation, it's not, you know, like, you can both work together in moving forward and, and actually, like, not, you know, like, really work together around finding a resolve. We've heard from committee members here that have stated how important it is to them. And I hope that as things move forward, that there's a real working relationship that can move forward with.
Okay, if there's no more comments, I'd like to make, I'd like to have us adopt the resolution to move forward with this exclusive negotiating agreement, but to make absolutely clear, you've heard the voices up here. If this does not work out, you got to start somewhere, and this is where we're starting. You've made your voices clear, and you know where we all stand. He knows where we stand, we know, you know, everybody knows. Everything's been totally transparent. So I say, let's get on with it, let's get those jobs, let's get that hotel, let's get that TOD tax that'll help us, you know, fill some potholes and have some recreation programs and the like. So I say, let's do it.
So we have a motion on this table. Do you have a second?
I'll say it.
There is a second, all in favor, or may we have a roll call, please?
Ms. Christensen?
Yes.
Mr. Breen Ventura?
Aye.
Mr. Sylvester?
We are now going steady. Aye.
Ms. Manalo?
Aye.
Through the mayor, I, I don't know if this would be an appropriate time to provide an update on our third development site. It wasn't agendized, but I'm more than happy to provide an update over there.
On the third, third one, that's the Duggan site. So I would ask the city attorney, because it, okay.
Yeah, we're not asking for any action, but I know, you know, there were three development sites that were marketed together and one sort of.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good night. Thank you.
Okay, so again, this is nothing that requires any sort of action, but we just wanted to provide an update because we had three sites that were marketed together and one sort of went on a different track, as you recall. We have a third development site at the intersection of Westlake and Hunipero Sarah. It's actually a bisected site where on the, you have the vacant parcel on the north side and then the site where PBRC is and the other, the old furniture building on the south side. Duggans had come in with a proposal to expand their facility and have meeting rooms and additional office space. And at the time, the council seemed very supportive of it. They directed them to move through the RFP process, and they did. And they submitted in a timely fashion a proposal. However, after they submitted, they realized that the construction costs for the subterranean parking were too great. So they began to look at providing some surface parking that would take up a portion of the development piece to the south. And so the concern at the time was that by whittling away that piece to the south, we would potentially lose the ability to find a viable development for that site. So they were directed to look into maybe finding another developer or partnering to find somebody that would take that remainder piece, which is actually larger than the piece that they would take. During that time, they've showed good faith effort and have made progress. This morning, staff received project design with, I'm sorry, I'm going to get the name for. Make sure I get it right. With Thunder Village Properties LLC. And they've submitted a, a concept that would include constructing an auto dealership, five-level auto dealership on the piece that wouldn't be utilized by Duggans. It's a concept at this point, but it shows. It's a concept at this point, but it shows serious intent and interest in the site. And so they will be submitting with Duggans in partnership, a proposal to, essentially responding to the RFP for the entire development site and no longer just taking up a portion of it. So I just wanted the council to know that that development piece is still in play, but it's on a different timeline.
What happened to the NEMS people?
Right.
The proposal from NEMS, I think, was maybe a little lower, lower intensity use. And so they wanted to get something that would probably provide a little more benefit to the community. And this developer, looks like they can take a stronger lead.
So NEMS is out.
At this point, I believe so.
And they're out because they pulled out?
I don't know specifically of that, but they have a partner developer now that's much more ready to move quickly and provide this proposal.
So it was just a discussion before, it wasn't a partnership?
Correct.
So when you mentioned the entire site, can you geographically state, like, what?
So again, it's the, if you go north of Westlake Avenue, there's the vacant piece next to the parking structure at DC Station. So Duggans would take that up in its entirety. And then Duggans is proposing, there's a maintenance road that goes up to the corporation yard. They want to maintain that access to the corporation yard and provide some additional surface parking that they can use because surface parking is cheaper to build for them. And so that fits their pro forma a little better, I think. And so what that did is it shrunk up the development piece to the south, which is essentially the old furniture building, the building PBRC is in, that slice there. And so we wanted to ensure that if Duggans was going to be a viable developer, that they didn't leave this remainder piece that was unusable or, especially since the zoning only allows at this point a 270,000 square foot office building. So it would render that site unable to accommodate the zoning. And so they worked with a developer that could utilize that piece, that would provide, you know, good economic benefits to the city and keep the project moving forward.
And so this car dealership would be selling a variety of different kind of cars? Or do we know anything about them? I've never heard of them before.
My understanding, it's new vehicles.
Good sales talks.
Thank you for that update. Any other questions? Sure? Is there some other head?
Ma'am, may I have a couple of comments? Thank you for the update. I, I'm getting conflicting information here. And I guess I just learned that it was just a discussion with NEMS because it was my understanding that NEMS was supposed to be a 6401 mission. And they got into an agreement with Duggans. They were going to partner up with Duggans and help build something there. Now I'm hearing it was out of the question. It's totally, it was just a discussion only. But we actually reviewed, reviewed that.
NEMS submitted a proposal for 6401 mission and then they backed out. We never got a submittal from NEMS for the southern piece. They had been talked about, but it was never a formal submission.
Got it. Now, I'm hearing changes for the piece of property at Westlake and JS to consist of PBRC, the mattress, this is what we're talking about now. But I have not seen an updated RFP go out. What if there are other folks who may want to change and build there? Why are we giving to this auto dealership, which we need?
We didn't, we didn't release another RFP because what we did is we extended the RFP period for Duggans to come up with a partner developer. So we didn't re-release it.
So.
But it was available for people to.
It doesn't sound like to me, Madam Christensen. It sounds like it was Duggans who has control over both pieces and they're trying to come up with a partner so that they can develop because on one side, it was too much money for them.
Right, because the RFP was actually for the development for the entire parcel. So that's why it's an extension of this parcel. So once, if we were to receive a formal joint proposal for the entire piece, then it would come before the council, for the council to decide if they wanted to continue with that or sever it for another proposal. But since we don't have a formal proposal, they're working off of the prior RFP, which was the entire parcel.
And but was that RFP closed?
No, essentially, Duggans put a proposal for that parcel, but it was not the entire parcel. So we had requested the council to continue so that they can consider looking at the development of the entire parcel. That's why they had proposals from NEMS and an informal proposal from this auto dealership.
As council member Sylvester mentioned, never went out for a new RFP.
No, because we, the council agreed to continue.
So it never closed?
It never closed. It's continued.
So other people, like this Thunder or whatever, could come in and propose part of the site? Or if someone else had wanted to have access to that site, they could have turned in a proposal as well?
The council selected, or actually, no, they didn't. The council, what they did is, they haven't selected the preferred developer, but they allowed additional time to Duggans. Not to the RFP, but to Duggans to submit a proposal that encompassed the entire development site. So it wasn't reopened because the, at that point in time, Duggans was the only proposer for the site.
They're the only ones that came forward for any proposal, for any part of it, yeah.
And so the council allowed them extra time to try to make their, their project work. And their project works if they can find a partner who will help, who will take the remainder piece that they won't be using.
Thank you for that update.
Thank you very much. All right, we're moving on to any appointments, board commission? Oh, I'm sorry, actually, public appearance and oral communications. And we have Ms. Pamela Giavani, please.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Vice Mayor of Council. I just want to say, it was pretty uplifting to see that Dell of Severn and Mountain Lodge and Terry and Clyde. These are plow unsung heroes and they're in the rain when you go by there. And I know the mayor has been by there and several people. And actually, council member Sylvester and the mayor and everybody came to clean up. And when you see them and they never complain, to see that they actually got recognition, they're very humble and won't tap their own horn. As we know, Dell's been fighting for probably 30 years. So I really want to thank you for that and thank you for the Red Cross. And remember that we even have firefighters that have lingering health issues related to the wildfires. It still lingers over today and to be aware of that. And our police officers who have not exhibited symptoms, but still can because they were there too. And so sometimes it comes a little later, just like our 9/11. So to remember them and our thoughts and to give them the support, which I know the council will, when at times when they have their injuries. And it did come through the wildfires. So I want to thank you for our unsung heroes. It's nice to see community members being recognized for hard work out there in the rain, never complaining. So thank you for doing that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Jonah Miller?
I don't know if I can move.
Don't worry. Take your time.
As you all know, I don't miss too many of these meetings. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. Well, everything I heard tonight could be resolved in a much easier manner. Why are you knocking yourselves out? You know what the problem is? Daly City doesn't have a newspaper. Nobody knows what's going on unless they come here.
That's true.
And I'm a little tired of it. And I know that Glenn, Sylvester and I could go out and talk to a few publishing companies and we'll get a newspaper.
Let's get one.
At least the community will know what's going on. What went on here tonight with this union thing shouldn't have even been discussed by the city council, as far as I'm concerned. It was not an item that needed to be discussed. Nothing has taken place that should have made it discussed. We don't have a contract. We don't know what's going to happen on that particular piece of property. Why should you have to go through what you went through tonight? You're not getting time and a half for overtime because you're non-union. Anyway, I came here 46 years ago, a street kid from the sidewalks of New York. And I love the diversity of what that sign says, the gateway to the peninsula. My wife and I came here, we raised our kids here, we had no problems, never had a problem. But I'll tell you this right now, we're creating some problems for ourselves. And it's up to the city council to set those problems aside. And if you need help, our problem is, we don't have a newspaper.
That's true. Nobody knows.
And as I said, Glenn, Sylvester and I will get us a newspaper. And anybody has any questions for me, my time is up.
Thank you so much, Mr. Miller. Can we have Gio Giugnini?
Me. Don't do the two-minute thing. And Sylvester, Mr. Sylvester, don't say a word. I don't want to hear you.
Well, this is sort of our bailiwick here, so.
What choice do I have when you guys don't have curb cuts? On Bell Crest or Longview? But I could go to Longview and I'd go to Longview. In Rockford, there's curb cuts. And how come there's a curb cut in front of my house that pitches off? It always holds water, dirt and debris. How come there's no police in the area where I live? When the buses go through the stop signs and the cars, especially when it's an elementary school block away? And they know what yelled me in school. And now some of the bus drivers, they don't even say, oh, I didn't know there was a crosswalk. The other day, bus 42 ran the stop signs like there's nothing. I can't even trust anybody when I cross the street. And what about the sidewalks? The driveway's not wide enough compared to the regular sidewalk. I thought from the curb to the water meter is five feet. That's city's priority. Why can't the city say, oh, we need to update the sidewalks for the ADA? My chair barely fits. And then you're putting all those poles in the sidewalks? I, I mean, I've heard lies and stories from John Fuller. He doesn't even return phone calls. Same with Pat Martell. I left my number and heard her call me back. And she hasn't called me back. Surely channelized. I'm trying to get a curb cut or a curb painted blue.
Oh, yeah, they don't.
So nobody parks there. But everybody parks there because I have to catch the bus at 5:30 in the morning to go to Stonestown to transfer. What rights do I have? How do I get on the bus? I can't.
You can't.
I have no rights. What do I need to do? Go public? On the, on the news? With Channel 7, Channel 4, Channel 2? Why can't I get a phone call? Why can't anybody do anything? I can't even get on the street to go on the back end of the school at FDR. Artisup Pacifica. We're having no curb cuts. Daly City's next. My attorney's already known. I have rights. And if I can't go down a sidewalk without a curb cut on Bell Crest or Longview, Daly City is at fault. I have rights. So what are you going to do as mayor? Why are you putting curb cuts over by ceremony? Not them where I live. You want me to get hit by a car? Go ahead, I'll get hit. And Daly City be so broke, they'll be like Pacifica. And I'm not doing it just for me. There's other people that are handicapped. There's people walking with walkers. There's other people with wheelchairs, regular wheelchairs. Why are they only on Skyline Drive but not on Longview and Bell Crest? Why is John Fuller telling me that the hills are too steep? Cow Tranch won't approve it. Why is John Fuller saying, oh, come out to my house and measure and look at the curb cutting? You want to see pictures? I have them on my phone. None of the other curb cuts hold water or dirt. Just in front of my house, you can see the pitches backwards. Why is the curb cut going to pull water and just trickling off the curb? Who's going to clean my carpet? I just paid $1,000 to have carpet put in my room downstairs. Who's going to pay to take those things out and all the money? I'm tired of it. And I'm sure other people have tried it. I haven't talked about the signs. They finally put those up in the underpass going into Pacifica. Yeah, they helped a lot. But I had to call the Butzes and Joe, the street division, to tell them to move the bags of garbage that was blocking my way. I had to drive like 300 yards in my power chair to get to a curb cut.
So.
With our safety first. This is more important than your hotel and all the money for the projects. What about ADA? Want you upgraded? It became law January 1st, 1994, nationwide. How come there's no curb cuts on Bell Crest or Longview?
So Mr. Gio Giugnini, so thank you for your public comment. I, you know, heard your concerns. I think our staff has your concerns listed and they're trying, they've responded as well. We've had Mr. Fuller and Ms. Martell. And so I hear your concerns around safety and ensuring that there's ADA conditions.
I'm sorry, sir, there are a lot of ADA.
So, so thank you for what you. So, so, thank you for what you've mentioned. I'd like Ms. Martell to make sure it's notated, all of the items that you cited.
I want to be updated on what's going on. I'm gonna come to every meeting until I see something being done. And I'll bring it up. I'm not afraid to go public.
Thank you.
Thank you for...
I want to see Daly City do something.
Okay, well, thank, thank you for being here this evening.
You do realize that there are some streets that are too steep to have curb cuts? I mean, I've...
There's a call beyond, from Caltrans.
I've been, I've been in a walker and had that same problem. And it was like, we can't put it there because it's so dangerous. If you went down that in a chair or a walker, you would, there's a possibility of flipping. But you have a much bigger chair and much more stable than like a regular wheelchair. But, um, taking notes, we've got everything. And I suspect next time you come, that you'll get the two-minute limit like everyone else in the public does. So, I'm suggesting the next time you come with your speech is that you time it and that you make sure it's two minutes.
To do the curb cuts on Bowcrest. And where are the underpasses? I talked about putting cameras there against the people.
With the garbage.
For their furniture and stuff. I had to call, judge them with the facts.
Yeah, your, your time is up now. And we appreciate your sharing with us. And thank you very much.
I want all of my attorney to help.
Thank you.
We can deal with them.
Thank you very much. Can we have Ms. Marion Mann, please?
I bought my first house in Daly City sixty-seven years ago. We did have the Daly City record.
Uh-huh, it was glorious.
If people don't advertise, the paper goes down. And that paper was around over a year. But you have to have it. One of the reasons that I tell you is that with the mountain, I mean, I don't know how many people saw the story about the San Bruno Mountains at six-thirty on NBC this past Sunday. You can go back and we'll get it back. And it will show you how school, I mean, there were a group of people many years ago who fought to keep the pristine mountain and because everyone wanted it. But we have three butterflies that only live on San Bruno Mountain, nowhere else in the world. So there's really a lot of things coming with that that I think that if anyone would be interested to do a little research, like the NBC thing on, at six-thirty, it was on Sunday. So I recommend anyone to watch it. Because when I was much younger, I used to go up on the mountain to save the world, okay?
Thank you, Ms. Mann. Thank you so much. So seeing no more public comment, are there any board or commission membership committees this evening?
Is this appointments?
Yes.
Oh, yes, Madam Mayor. In reviewing some of our commissions on our website, I see that we have a particular, actually two commissioners whose term has expired. I am concerned that any decisions made by those commissioners may come under scrutiny because their term is expired. I think we need to move forward and get those positions filled or to reappoint in those commissions. Now, the most, the one that's the most languished is Commissioner whose term has expired. I believe it was in June of last year. And we need to move forward and to...
Do we know what, who the commissioner is?
I think it was appropriate for me to put the name, but I'll do so.
Do we know what commission, at least?
Yes, it's the Planning Commission. And Commissioner's name is Mr. Raymond Satori. And I've asked before if, if there was any updates. And I'm not getting any recommendations. I went through the Daly City ordinance and found that the commissioners are appointed by the city council. So I would like to call the question and making an appointment to the Planning Commission.
Okay.
You mean for that position?
For that position, yes.
Well, the policy of the city and the past practice is that each council member gets to make a nomination to that position. That has always been the case. And there have been some nominations that people on this council have made in the last two years that y'all voted down. So I think there's probably a little animosity there and a little bit of not, if someone wants to put someone forward, they're afraid that you're all gonna vote them down, like you did before.
So, Ms. Christensen?
I would think that maybe we should...
Talking about the voting down and the practices on the council, you're directing it one way. There were also other instances otherwise. So I think, um...
So, well, what I'm saying is, is that maybe we should not do anything about this tonight, but contact people and see if Councilmember Guingona would like to make a nomination and that we could keep with that, that practice. Otherwise, I'm gonna be in the mood of making a lot of nominations.
Thank you, Madam Christensen. I don't want to get into a debate here. What has been done as past practice as to what is written in an ordinance are two separate things. You indicated that it has been policy, but there is no written policy. However, the ordinance, and I'll reiterate, says that appointments on commissions are by the city council.
Yeah, that has always been.
I would take to infer that it would take a vote by the city council for the approval. So basically, what I am doing again is I'm calling the question. And while I'm at it, Madam Christensen, your appointee's term is also expired.
Who is it for that, that?
For the Planning Commission.
Oh, well.
So I would...
Charlie Tellerico's a fabulous commissioner.
Well, I...
I will do, take care of that at the next meeting.
Okay, so, basically, I'm calling the question. I would like to move forward in nominating someone for the expired term on the Planning Commission.
So are you putting out a motion at this time?
Well, I would like to make a motion, but I would advise the council first. And in order to try to ensure that we continue with what we have and to get along, I don't know what the delay is, but I would like to nominate current Commissioner Ray Satori to be nominated for the Planning Commission. He's the current commissioner at this time, and I would just like to clear the books.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, we have a second. And we should do a roll call? Sure, we'll do a roll call vote.
And have you spoken to Mr. Satori to find out if he would like to continue in that position?
I haven't spoken to him recently. But he has made it, he has told me that he was concerned.
That he would like, but he would like to continue?
He didn't state that he would like to continue, but he didn't say in a negative that he wants off.
Okay. I'd like to modify that motion to say if he agrees to continue. Because you don't want to stick someone in something that they don't want to do, you know? Let's give him a chance.
I think he'll, he'll, I think he...
I know him well enough to think he will.
Yeah.
But just as a proper procedure, you know, you kind of have to let the guy know.
Yeah.
But he's been in attendance to the meetings, right? So if, I think if he's in attendance to the meetings, that's physically saying he wants to continue. Okay. Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Ms. Christensen?
I support Ray being a Planning Commissioner, but I do not support this process of taking it away from Councilmember Guingona. So, Ray, this has nothing to do with you. I support you being on the Planning Commission, but I'm gonna have to vote no because I don't support the procedure.
Mr. Buendia Ventura?
Aye.
Mr. Sylvester?
Aye.
Ms. Manalo?
Aye. Are there any other appointments?
Madam Mayor, for the record, I'd like to be reflected in the minutes that Madam Christensen's appointee, Mr. Tellerico's, term is expired at this time. And if we can move forward at some point in the future, as soon as possible to...
Next meeting.
Thank you, Madam.
They don't let us know when their terms are expired? I don't know. Do you guys know when all your people are expired?
There's a, there's a list. Thank you, Council...
Look at the list.
There's a list.
Well, I don't look at the list all the time.
There's a list online. There's a list that we hold. But thank you very much, Councilmember Sylvester, for keeping an eye out on that.
And thank you for letting me know. I greatly appreciate that. I'll talk to Charlie, well, it's a little late now, but tomorrow, find out if he wants to do it.
We're moving on to reports, council committee reports, please, Agenda Item fourteen.
Madam Mayor, is this for council reports? You said reports.
Uh, yeah, so, council, council committee. So council committee, if there's any committees that we had. None? Okay, so moving on to city council.
Okay. I heard the, oh, thank you. It's so good to feel loved. Mr. Miller, I know there was a reason why I liked you so much. I didn't know you from New York. I'm from New York as well. So we have to get together and talk some more.
Is it Brooklyn?
Brooklyn. All right, see? And I heard a comment about saving the world on the mountain. Yeah, I remember the mountain, and we did different things on the mountain. I just saved the world. Anyway, my comment this evening is two issues. One, I'm gonna talk about Republic Services. A constituent wrote me an email this morning and took some pictures of some garbage that has been dumped. And he asked me if I would do something about it. Now, normally, I would respond on the email, and this is for the folks out there who are watching. You can go to Daly City iHelp and post your concerns regarding debris and litter. And it will be taken care of within seventy-two hours. Well, I didn't, I didn't go that route. I just went ahead and advised a person that I would go ahead and post on his behalf. And so I did do that. And the system works, folks. Because within, wait, first it told me, we will take care of the matter. Then it tells me it has been referred to Republic Services, and it will be taken care of within seventy-two hours. I get an email, it was taken care of within four hours. So the system works. And I'd like to thank our iHelp system and just to let everyone know out there that it does work. I got another call today from a longtime constituent in Daly City. And you know Daly City is a big city, and we have a parking problem. I've been an advocate that we try to work with each other, but there are some folks who take advantage of the situation. According to the California Vehicle Code, it states that your vehicle should not be left on the street, even though it's a public right-of-way, in excess of over seventy-two hours. So what folks are doing, they are parking their vehicles on the street, and if a person calls in, they are advised you have to wait seventy-two hours. So at the end of seventy-two hours, a reminder is put out. And then law enforcement goes out, or parking assistants or the controllers, and they go out. And they will put a notice on the vehicle. Please be advised that your vehicle has been parked for, a complaint has been received, seventy-two hours. Well, what that notification does, and this is based upon my experience, I don't know how it's done here in Daly City, is that after seventy-two hours, then the vehicle can be towed. So if you add seventy-two hours plus seventy-two hours, that's a hundred and forty-four hours. But then comes the seventh day, and they move the vehicle.
And they don't move it very far.
They don't move it very far. And then they'll move the vehicle, say, across the street. And then at the end of the seventh day, you begin the process again. We have to do something about this. And I'm calling on our police department to come up with a plan, complaint-driven. I'm not saying to go out because we tend to live by the spirit of the law rather than the letter of the law. I'm asking on complaint-driven complaints of vehicles being parked, that if we abide by the law and that we put a notice on the vehicle, that our folks who are enforcing that vehicle code violation before towing the vehicle get out there at seventy-two hours and say five minutes. You see, and I think if we start doing this, that this will help alleviate some of the problems that we're having. But we are not enforcing it against everyone, only on complaint-driven complaints. Complaint-driven. If nobody complains, then all the better. But just know that Daly City, we tend to have, we look the other way. But it's causing a problem with parking in our city. And eventually, this council, I feel, will come to a point in time where we're going to have to decide how we're going to address the parking, whether it be permits or, but we will involve the community. But right now, my concern is, based upon this complaint that I got, was the seventy-two hours and how people are playing cat and mouse with our law enforcement and code enforcement officials. And that's all my comments, Madam Mayor.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Sylvester. Any other comments from my colleagues?
Yeah, I just have a question. How is the task force for the rooming, house, and short-term rentals coming?
We have been working with the identified members of the task force. And unfortunately, the time schedule that we've put together doesn't work perfectly for everyone. So we're trying to, to look at different dates that can accommodate the most people. It's difficult when you have a group of ten or fifteen people to get all of them to agree to the same three days. And that's the point at which we find ourselves. The process, we're ready to go. It's just finding the dates that will work with the majority of the people on the task force.
Great.
Thank you for that update. So I just wanted to share with everyone, there was the Spring Fun Day. That was on March thirty-first at Polisita. The Daly City Host Lions and Republic Services sponsored the event. And we saw Chief Hensley and his wife there. Also, if you weren't there, there was also an event by our supervisor, District Five, together. Councilmember Sylvester and many others were there. It was also the first time they had Citizen of the Year Award. And Daly City's Citizen of the Year was our former mayor, Sal Torres. And also on Thursday, April fifth, the Jefferson Varsity Boys Basketball Team won the Northern Pal Championship. And then also on Thursday, April fifth, um, the Jefferson Vars City Boys Basketball Team won the Northern Pal Championship and they had a victory parade and also award ceremony that day. On April fifth, Thursday, there was also the fifteen-year anniversary of the Filipino Commune mural at San Francisco State University and was very honored to speak about service and public service to the college students. Um, I also wanna say thank you to City Attorney Zimmerman in researching the small business commissions. Um, I'm still looking to explore how this could be made possible. Uh, I'd like to say thank you to the Daly City Police Department who assisted at, um, the unfortunate incident at San Bruno at YouTube. Um, you know, the, we had our Daly City Police Department, um, some of them that went over there and assisted right away. And so I really wanna say thank you for doing that and, um, it's, it's so important. And thank you for, uh, making our community safe and being able to also support our other jurisdictions when needed in times of emergencies. Also, um, these are just announcements again for, because we don't have a newspaper, uh, at the moment, I'm saying loud and clear for everyone. Make sure that we know that, you know, our budget hearings are gonna be here, um, Thursday, April twelfth, Monday, April sixteen, Tuesday, April seventeenth, and Monday, April twenty-third. So, those are some key dates around, um, our budget hearing meetings. Um, and then mentioned earlier, our very fun and enjoyable, um, April twenty-first, Saturday, Earth Day. And so if you wanna give back to Top of the Hill Daly City or if you have a whole bunch of documents to shred, uh, you know, bring them over. About three banker boxes you could bring over. Also e-waste, so if you have TVs, cell phones, monitors, printers, but no large appliances or refrigerators. Also, if you wanna grab some compost, it's about one cubic yard you can grab from here. Used tires, you know, not commercial ones, but, um, you know, if you have any used tires, you could bring them over. But at this time, this, uh, you know, Earth Day, no hazard, hazardous waste. And you, sometimes we have that, just wanna be clear, at this time, we're not taking in any hazardous waste. And so I just also wanted to share with everyone that there's going to be a film in line with our Earth Day, A Clean Energy Revolution will be shown right here in our chambers at five-thirty on Thursday, April sixteen. Also, if you wanna learn about how voting will be changing in San Mateo County, the Secretary of State Alex Badiya, Senator Scott Wiener, Assembly Member Phil Ting on April nineteen will be at the Dolger Senior Center from six to seven-thirty PM. And then for those of you in the audience and watching TV, if you have any, um, you know, youth that want to apply for the Daly City Colma Chamber Scholarship, it's a thousand dollars. The deadline is Monday, April sixteen, and it'll be awarded on Thursday, May seventeen. And we did mention this earlier, but wanna remind everyone again that Saturday, May twelve, will be the gun buyback here at City Hall from ten AM to one PM. And that is it for my council reports. Um, at this point, uh, we also would like to ask if there are any staff updates.
I could provide a sta, a staff update, Madam Mayor. I did provide a memo to the City Council, you had requested any updates on, uh, the desire to have minimum wage in Daly City. Part of the update included, uh, essentially what the state law was, uh, proposing and is proposing and what neighboring jurisdictions will have in terms of, um, minimum wage. You'll see in the memo, this is just for information, that, um, the state California minimum wage from twenty-seventeen to twenty-thirteen is raising minimum wage from ten-fifty to fifteen dollars, uh, in twenty-twenty-two and for nonprofits and under, twenty-five employees or less, it's fifteen dollars. I did include in the memo for consideration is, the City of Redwood City just recently adopted an ordinance, uh, for minimum wage that it will increase in twenty-nineteen to thirteen-forty and to twenty-twenty to fifteen dollars. San Mateo did adopt a minimum wage ordinance in twenty-sixteen from twelve dollars to fifteen dollars as well. These are, just to give you a general idea, uh, the City Attorney and the, at the direction of the City Council can adopt an ordinance, but it would be probably something that you would wanna consider with the neighboring businesses or have workshops or study sessions if you wanted to consider, uh, minimum wage update. I mean, you're probably aware that the current minimum wage in Daly City, I believe, is eleven dollars, which is in line with the California minimum wage.
Right, 'cause I think as, as we talked about it before, the problem is not what we do here, but the enforcement.
Right, there is enforcement and you'll see in the ordinance, it's essentially, there's, you have injunctions or citations or however you wanna go ahead and enforce it, but that, that is probably part of the process as it's outlined.
Thank you so much for this update, um, Attorney Rose Zimmerman, um, Councilmember Sylvester.
Uh, Madam Zimmerman, um, thank you so much. I've waited a long time for this information and, uh, it looks very detailed, so it can help us come to a decision. What I don't have here is, uh, at our previous meeting, and now, I don't think this is, uh, on your part, is what would it cost the city based upon the employees who are making less than? Uh, no, they're at eleven dollars an hour. So, if we wanted to increase it, how many, like, say, part-time, uh, folks who we ha, who we have working for us and what it would do for our budget? Because I wanted to be in line with some of our neighboring cities and I had given, uh, provided a, basically, a chart as, uh, by twenty-twenty-one of fifteen dollars per hour. So, I, I think in order to do that, we would need to have a study session. We would need to involve the community and the businesses within our community so that, uh, you know, we can move forward, 'cause living in the Bay Area is quite expensive. And I did hear a saying once, nobody who works full-time should have to live in poverty.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Sylvester, thank you for this, I appreciate the update. I know, um, we had a study session and basically, um, that's why we were asking for what the update was. And I think at this point, um, you know, we, at our further discussion, figure out how we can do, as mentioned, community outreach to the small businesses. But this is extremely helpful in the next piece moving forward, so, thank you very much.
Thank you.
At this time, um, I'd like to, uh, adjourn in memory of, uh, Edgardo Y Cruz, Public Works employee, Dolores Cruz's brother-in-law. And also, today is, um, April ninth, which is the Batan Death March. It's the commemoration of that day in World War Two. And there have also been many in the past that have passed away during that time and I'd also like to adjourn in their memory. Let's have a moment of silence, please. Thank you.